Consent on whites instead of the yellows, so you'll have to think everything to...
Supervisor Johnson?
Good morning. We'll call this meeting to order. If we please rise, we have your invocations. Supervisor Bishop and Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Angus. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture our bonds of our communities. Fill us with your grace and continue to remind us that all we accomplish is for the greater glory of you and for the service of our county. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to the Arizona Revised Statutes. Call for motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on September 4th, 2018 at 9:00 AM for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with the Arizona Revised Statutes, 38-431.03, portions A, 3, 4, and 7, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion? There are none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Official business to come before the board. Number one, Mr. Asplin, discussion of pending contemplated litigation claims and demands.
Nothing to report to the board.
Thank you. Committee reports. We'll start with Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing this morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Bishop?
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
DCP. The drought contingency plan for the state of Arizona is starting to get down to nuts and bolts. This is a committee that is going to make a difficult decision on the entire state of Arizona and how we are going to have to make sacrifices as a state, regardless of what cities and counties have done. We're down to nuts and bolts and small group meetings, and the first thing that we are discussing is ag mitigation. And in discussing these things, we're finding out that the different priorities and the different things and the different needs of the state of Arizona are very difficult, and it's going to be a very trying committee to try to come together with everybody being happy.
Thank you. I have a short report. I was in Phoenix last week on Wednesday and Thursday presenting the subdivision plan for Colorado City for the acceptance by the Arizona Board of Realty in the Governor's Office, and happy to report that that was well accepted. County Manager's report?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted the board to know that I traveled to Morinsey to meet with the legislative, state legislative environmental committee to provide testimony on our concerns for Colorado River water and for the groundwater basins in Mojave County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrix. Approved at July 2nd, 2018, Board of Supervisors' minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Now, we're on to call to the public. Those wishing to address the board at the call of the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form. They are located in the back of the room, and they must be done prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. This morning, we have three speakers wishing to speak. David Akers?
Yeah, my name is David Akers, and I'm a resident here in Mojave County, and we camp up in the Pioneer District probably four or five months out of the year. And this is the first year the fire restrictions have been placed all summer. And prior to the eight years I've been going up there, we have had a week or two weeks where we've had a fire restriction. Even when we had the Dean Fire, it never lasted more than two, three weeks. So I was just wondering, with all the rain that we've had over the last month, why the fire restriction hasn't been lifted yet, and is it going to be under consideration for the last, basically, month of the summer?
Well, sir, I can answer that question.
I'm sorry, Chairman. We're not during the call to the public.
You're correct.
We're not to answer those questions, but we can refer it to staff and other ways to address that issue.
And if you'd like to meet with me after the meeting, I'd be glad to speak with you on that.
Okay. So just wanted to know if that was going to be under consideration. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you. Ms. Morgane?
Thank you. Jem Morgane. I'm a District One constituent. What I wanted to address today is the water sustainability issue. Mary McCord Robinson spoke for me at the last meeting. I was down in La Paz addressing a different issue. The one thing I wanted to follow up on was a comment that was provided to her about Prop 207. That is, has nothing to do with the county's ability to zone and rezone. That is about eminent domain and about property owners being properly reimbursed for their property rights as well as, has nothing to do with this county's ability to zone and rezone. The law grants this county, all counties in Arizona, the state law grants this county the power to zone. That is the very first power that is granted to the county. And it's only down in Section C that there's a limitation that is stipulated for the five industries that are being protected at the state level. I don't understand why this county is not pressuring our legislators to remove that restriction. That would then grant you the ability to put an immediate moratorium on future agriculture, the commercial agriculture, here in the Wallopi Basin specifically, since that is the most detrimental that is happening for us. I don't understand why this county board is doing absolutely nothing to pressure our legislators to do their job and remove that legislative restriction against the power. So that's the part that I just, I don't understand. I've also been researching that the county has at one point, prior to 2014, the AMA, it has sought out to get information about the AMA. There are two paths to having an AMA designated. One is the state to designate it. The second is for the, an initiative to be brought to the people. So I have a consultation this week with an attorney who I am hoping will be able to help me to draft that initiative so that we can have a petition, so that we can take it to the people ourselves to get that AMA. If this county board is not going to do it, the people of Mojave County will do it. So that's what I am going to leave with you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Boone?
Michael Boone, 2210 Palo Verde, North Lake, Havasu City. Good morning. What I'm about to talk to you about has nothing to do with the agenda items, so I don't want to waive my chance to speak at the agenda items. So me talking to you about a non-agenda item now does that. I'll pass and talk about the agenda items. But I want to thank the secretaries upstairs at the Board of Supervisors' office for all the hard work they do answering the public records requests that have been submitted. What I'm finding lately is records being omitted. Records that I know actually exist because I had previously seen them through other people that have asked those records, and those records have been omitted. Additionally, the AG has made it very clear the policy on personal cell phones and conducting business on personal cell phones, text messaging on cell phones, and emails on cell phones. In one of the requests, I was denied that information, saying that it was a personal cellphone. So it's very clear. I know Mr. Asplin's a very competent attorney, and I'm sure he's done training on ARS 38-421 and ARS 132407, which relates to not producing records, secreting records, deleting records, or conveniently misplacing records. So I'll be resubmitting those public records requests, and I hope that we can get the records that we requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. So with that, Supervisor Johnson, do you have any items to pull?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Items 25, 33, and 41.
25, 33, 41. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
I have none.
Supervisor Angus? Supervisor Wakamoto?
Nothing.
And I have none either. Okay, Chair would entertain a motion for the acceptance of the consent agenda with the exception of items 25, 33, and 41.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 25. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure, maybe the county manager couldn't answer the questions, but the vehicle that we're getting is a 93 vehicle. Is that correct?
Mr. Hendrix?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear Supervisor Johnson that clearly. I saw item 25 is for accepting the donation of six pews from Calvary Baptist Church, and it was submitted by the Superior Court Administrator. Is that the correct item?
You've got it right. I just gave the wrong numbers. It's hard for me to see these numbers here. I would make a motion to approve item 25.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item number 25. There being any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 33? Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Given the county manager, this is a 1993 ambulance that we're looking to have donated to us through search and rescue. Is that correct?
Mr. Hendrix?
Mr. Chairman, if it would be acceptable to you and the rest of the board members, I believe we have a member of the sheriff's office here who might be able to speak on that and give the specifics for Supervisor Johnson.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Supervisor Watson, board members. I have Mike Beetz with me. He's with the search and rescue, and he knows the ins and outs of this vehicle. From what I understand, it would be stationed in Lake Havasu and used for all manner of emergency response. And I personally think it's a good idea because, I mean, apparently it's in really good condition. The mileage isn't all that high for a diesel. And from what I've read in the background information, it would be, it would be an asset to the search and rescue in District 3.
I guess my questions are, being an ambulance, usually when I think of a mini-command post, it's something that, you know, you can stand up in, put papers in, you know, to go over maps or whatever that the search and rescue folks are doing. This is basically a sit-down vehicle, and once it fills with the capacity, there's really no room for any kind of a command post, is there?
I'm Mike Beetz, Lieutenant.
Please.
Mojave County Search and Rescue. There is room inside to stand up. There is also room outside of the vehicle for storage that has all of our equipment, rope gear, swiftwater gear. We have a wheeled Stokes that's in the unit. So we have all our stuff around the city in various members' garages and things, and if we can use this, all that would be in one place. It can double as a command post or a cooling center once it's out in the field. And as far as the age, it is a 93. It's got 82,000 miles on it, and it was the... 63,000 miles, I'm sorry. It was Yucca Fire's truck before I obtained it. So it was well-maintained, and it's still in good shape.
Very good.
Is it, is my understanding that we put quite a bit of money into it already or through donations? Could you give me an idea of how much money has been spent on this already?
As of right now, we have put no money into the unit because I was not going to allow the unit to have it until it was either accepted by the county or we decided to take care of it in another direction. So no money has been put into it. I put some sweat equity into it, cleaning it up and making it look nice. It used to have a red stripe down the side and everything. Took care of that. As you can see in the picture, there's plenty of storage. It is a taller unit, so it's room for standing up. The, we have donations for new tires from Rudy Glass. We have donations from Anderson Ford for three years, $500 a year, and after that first three years, I'll look into more. And they also told us if there was an issue with the vehicle, that would go over the 500. They would look into that to making us a good deal on maintenance and other things.
Now, does the air conditioning work in this? It's my understanding that the air conditioning does not work.
Right now, the air conditioning does not work, and the search and rescue unit has voted to take care of those problems before it is donated.
All right. Now, this is a diesel, so are you going to have some kind of a generator mounted or something so that it can be, you know, all the stuff can be run without just running the vehicle the entire time?
There's extra batteries in the unit. There is an inverter system already in it where it is an ambulance, and it, we were planning on possibly buying a generator and putting a rooftop air on it so that we didn't have to run the diesel while we're out there and save time and effort on the engine and keep the exhaust to a minimum. So we could put a generator remotely away from it and plug it in and run any, any other items through the inverter system.
All right. And did we have this run through our motor pool for, just to check to see if there was any problems with it?
As far as I know, it has not yet been run through.
Those are all the questions I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Any other questions?
Any other supervisor have a question?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll make a motion that we accept the donation of the former ambulance to be converted to a mini-command post.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Because of the number of people in the discussion, let's have a roll call on this. Please, Clerk.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Onto item number 41.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve. I had wrote down the numbers wrong, so I'd just make a motion to approve item 41.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? There being none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Onto the public hearings, number 42. I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action to approve and adopt Mojave County Ordinance Number 2018-02, setting forth a revised fee schedule for services provided in the implementation of the adopted Mojave County Building Codes for the Building Division of Development Services Department and established August 20th, 2018, as the implementation, Building Division Hot Jobs Initiative, providing a 10% increase in salary to the planned examiner and building inspector positions. I have one person signed to speak to item number 42. Jennifer Jones Esposito.
Jennifer Jones Esposito, candidate for the Arizona House of Representatives, 3211 East Navy Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. I know this is probably a waste of my time, but I'm just going to reiterate my opposition to fee increases for planning and zoning. You know, obviously, you guys already passed the previous part. This is probably just one of those housekeeping things, the way that it has to be done. But I spoke at the Builders Association over in Bullhead City recently, and in our phone conversation with one of the members, I said, "Why isn't the, why aren't the builders, why aren't the contractors opposing the fee increase?" And the answer I was given was, "Well, we oppose the higher increase, but we felt that if we opposed a lower increase, we, you know, would be just seen as adversarial." And I think it's kind of sad that, you know, fee increases that affect the economy, that affect local businesses, that they're afraid to take the stand that they feel because they've, you know, and this was someone who was paraphrasing for, for the builders. So I just want to say the idea that because no contractors came and opposed this did not mean that they don't oppose it. They just felt that it strategically wasn't in their best interest, and that was what was communicated to me. You know, and it is hearsay, obviously. It wouldn't be admissible in court. But, you know, I don't think that increasing fees on the front end in order to grow a department, hire more employees, make the permit process maybe a day or two faster is really the purpose because, you know, these sorts of things are not supposed to operate on a profit. They're just supposed to operate on an as-need basis. So, you know, growing the department on the front side rather than collecting additional property taxes on improvements by making it cheaper and, and, you know, for people to pull a permit and get things done, you'll get that back in perpetuity on the backside through increased valuations. As a property owner here in Mojave County, I have to say that I find it a disincentive to improve my property. But fortunately, having served on a planning and zoning board, I'm pretty good at navigating loopholes and figuring out how to get done what I want to do without having to pay you. So if anybody else has that problem, I'd be more than willing to look at it. But I just don't think that it's the right business model for the county to take to increase permits and fees under any proposal at this current time, given that the economy is improving, evaluations are going up, and people will be paying more property taxes anyways, even though taxes weren't increased. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 42? Okay, I'll close the public hearing for item number 42.
Chairman Watson, may I say something?
Certainly.
I want to reiterate a little bit of the history of this. Last year, this was voted on at a much higher rate permits. I mean, it was, it was, there were new ones, there were higher ones, and it was voted on and it was approved. It worked really hard, and then they were rescinded, and it was kind of, we went back to the drawing board, and I thanked Development Services for that. Went back to the contractors. In fact, the county administrator and Tim Walsh and myself went to the Mojave Valley Contractors Association, explained all the rates, explained why. And at that time, if there was anybody who was upset about it, I don't know, they didn't say anything, and that was the opportunity. I've never known the Mojave Valley Contractors Association under Larry Adams wants to mince words. So they seemed very, because again, just like Jennifer Jones said, this is a department that is supposed to be, take care of itself. And if it doesn't, and we have to dip into the general fund, then everyone's paying for it. So there's that fine balance. And I think that, you know, if it has to be, I have my own opinions on what should be, I think this, this was a good balance on it. It took a long time. So I'm just asking, is there anything here in what we're voting on today that we haven't seen before?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, what's being presented is the same strategy that was presented to the board in April. It was, that strategy was also presented to the Building Code Advisory Board and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and no changes were made to it. So this is exactly...
Same, same exact step.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Wait.
Supervisor Wakamoto, do you have a question?
I do. With this, you know, and, and understanding what is happening, and I appreciate everything that has happened, that we had the large increases and we've brought this into a manageable situation. My district is totally county, so this is very important to me in terms of... to me in terms of how your department runs. And I'm hoping with this, um, fee increase as we, as we move forward, that we will be able to better service, uh, the contractors and that we will be able to develop in the county because I think it's really important to economic growth.
Mr. Chairman, may I provide a, a little clarification also and, and ask for Tim to, um, confirm what I'm, what I'm saying. You know, there was a statement that we're growing the department. Actually, uh, when we looked at what the department needed, what we found is that, uh, we had trouble attracting and retaining qualified individuals in a certain area because we were so underfunded, underpaid. Um, this proposal that, uh, Director Walsh is putting forward to the board and has put forward to the board is only solely so that he can try to start firing on all cylinders by attracting and retaining qualified employees in all of his plans examiner, examiner positions. And I want to make, uh, uh, clear that this doesn't add any positions whatsoever. All it does is provide for increases, uh, in, in those particular positions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I ask a question on that? What is the, how do you measure that? How do you measure the success of, um, you know, better, better performance?
That's a, that's a very good question. Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, um, first to, to confirm what County Manager Hendricks has, has explained, that, that is correct. Currently, I'm operating, um, I've got a, two vacant positions. It's a Plans Examiner Senior slash Inspector down in Bullhead City. And then I'm also, uh, missing an Inspector Senior here in Kingman. So I'm down two positions and those have been open, shoot, I'd probably say Bullhead City's been well over a year. Uh, Kingman's probably been six months to a year that, that I've been without those two positions. And, and trying to attract those qualified candidates has, has, we, we've just been unsuccessful. In addition to that, I currently have four temporary positions that, that are trying to fill in some of the gaps, uh, throughout the department. Both inspectors up on the strip, inspectors here in town, inspectors down in Bullhead. So, um, to, to confirm what, what County Manager Hendricks said, that, that is absolutely correct. The intent of this is in order to, um, provide the, the salaries that would, would make us competitive with other cities. We, we looked at what the other cities were paying, cities and counties were paying throughout the state, and we were about 15% behind them. Um, so to, to get those qualified candidates, it, it's been, uh, difficult to do so. What this proposal does is it's an 8% increase across the board to, to the building fees. And with that 8%, um, what I'll be able to do is provide a 10% increase for my plans examiners and my, uh, building inspectors and get them a little bit closer to that competitive rate. Um, to answer your question, Supervisor Angus, it's a, it's a measure of quality, uh, quality control and customer service. Our intent is, is by being able to, uh, attract those qualified candidates, the customer service level, um, one, being able to fill those positions that I have vacant, but also bringing in those qualified, uh, candidates will be able to provide a, a higher level of customer service. And, and ultimately to measure that, um, what we're, what we're looking to do is, is to provide the, the contractors in the area with a, a customer service, uh, survey. Basically, ask them how we're doing. And, and hopefully, as we monitor those, those surveys, that, that number or that, that response will, will continue to improve as we're able to bring those qualified people.
Tim, somebody asked me, um, a while ago, that there are some counties that put on, um, permit status online where, so people can check to see where, where their permits are at. I mean, that seems to be something that would be of minimal cost, but would go a long way. Have we looked into anything like that?
We are actually currently working, um, we, we have a program right now and, and IT will probably get with me after this and tell me I said it all wrong, but we're, we're working with IT. Uh, our, our current software that we use for tracking permits, we can view all that internally. Um, with some of the upgrades that we're, we're considering and that we're working with IT, that will be an outward facing program that the public can get on and, and view that status. So my understanding is, in the, in the not so distant future, we will be able to have that, that ability. Hopefully, within the year we'll have that.
I think that would go a long way for people to understand that, you know, although they're paying a little bit more, the service is that much better for them if they can see it.
Definitely.
Thank you.
And the inspectors would be contacting the contractors to make an appointment for when they would be at inspection sites and things like this, so that everybody doesn't waste their time, inspectors or the contractors?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Wakamoto, we are working on a number of changes within the Building Division to, to address those customer service issues. Um, one is, is just as you said, being able to provide the contractors with a, a, a more defined time that we should be in their area. It's, it's hard for our inspectors going from one inspection to another to know exactly when they'll be there, but to, to provide like, like your, your cable guy does or, or the, the repairman does, I should be there within this, this timeframe, I think is a reasonable, uh, expectation of the department.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Walsh, what's the current turnaround time on plan check? Average?
Current plan check, and, and it depends on what we shoot for, right, what we're shooting for right now and, and what, what the Building Division tells me is, is where we're at, is, is right about a, a two-week turnaround. Uh, we're hoping to get that down as we can fill some of these positions. Um, hoping to get that down closer to about a five-day turnaround. That's, that's the goal.
That'd be fantastic. I know that, uh, due to the shortcomings that we've had in, in the department, the plan checks have been running anywhere from three to five weeks and obviously you've been working on that, so.
And, and we will continue.
As they say, time is money.
Definitely.
For sure. Thank you very much. Any further questions? Mr. Walsh?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Chair, would entertain a motion for item number 42.
Are we still in public?
Yes. I've closed the public hearing, Ms. Morgane, but you're more than welcome to come down and speak.
After listening to the, uh, conversation that just has taken place on this issue prior to this board actually taking a vote on it, I'd like to call attention to the fact that you are setting a precedence, uh, that I will hold you accountable to. Everything about the fee increases is about, um, what I just heard. It is because of, um, the need to increase a pay to attract qualified employees as much as 10% increase. And that's what these fees are going for. Now, this board has not been supportive of the teachers who have been advocating for the same thing. The teachers have been complaining that they need to have the same respect.
Ms. Morgane, how do, how do teachers relate to this issue?
I'm just saying, I, I'm asking this board to understand that when you vote to pass this fee increase for, in order to have these employees have their salary raised, because that is what is required to, um, attract competent, qualified candidates, that I'm going to hold this board to that precedence around the other issues. I'm just drawing attention to that fact.
I can have a point of order. We just, what we, what we have to address is all those on the agenda. And, and I respect your opinion, I do, but we just, we're not going to talk about teacher issues here on this particular agenda.
I understand. I, the, the only point of my bringing that up is just, I'm just bringing awareness to the board that when you-
Thank you, Ms. Morgane. You can hold us responsible. Certainly. This is designed to increase the service and ability to, for that department to, uh, increase its availability to the public and do a better job.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve.
Uh, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, uh, for item number 42. Any further discussion? Because it's, and it has been an open hearing, let's have a roll call vote.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Onto item number 43. I'd like to open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action for the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance 2018-05. Approve and adopt the Stormwater Management Ordinance, which is designed to provide for the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Mojave County through the provision of the introduction of non-storm water drainages to the storm drainage systems to the maximum extent practicable as required by federal and state law. This ordinance will also protect waters of the U.S. within Mojave County by improving the quality of stormwater runoff from urbanized areas to the county-owned system by means of the use of the best management practices by the county and its citizens as required by the Arizona Department of Environmental Qualities MS-4 Grant Permit, Number AZG 2016-002. Mojave County's MS-4 permit area is currently for the unincorporated areas adjacent to the Lake Havasu City that were designated as urbanized areas based on the 2010 dicentennial census. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 43? Anyone wishing to speak to item 43? Okay, at this point, I'll close the public hearing for item 43. And entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval of 43.
Second.
And a second? Want to make, make sure that I close the public hearing. Okay, I need, close the public hearing for item number 43. If you'll introduce your motion again.
Making a, a motion to approve item, Agenda Item Number 43.
And second, thank you. Any further discussion? There being none. And because it has been a public hearing, we'll go for a roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Onto item number 44. Uh, open the public hearing for sitting as the Board of Directors for the Golden Valley Improvement District, Number One. Discussion, possible action to approve the proposed amendments to its policy and procedures, memorandum Number 90-1, as shown in Amendment Number 18-2, to establish modified guidelines and procedures on billing practices and customer service connections. We have one person signed up to speak to that item, Jennifer Jones Esposito.
Thank you, Jennifer Jones Esposito. Address previously stated. Um, as a property owner in the Golden Valley Improvement District, I try and, uh, keep up on these things. You know, I looked at the supporting document and it says, "Established conditions under which a property owner can service non-residential use on their property, provided they maintain an unused service connection or purchase an unassigned service connection from the district if available." The conditions that are being established aren't listed. And the other thing it says is, "Established conditions under which business entities in good standing may provide security to the satisfaction of the district in lieu of cash deposits." I find it very interesting that a business, and I'm not sure what a business in good standing is defined as, as opposed to a residential property owner in good standing, and why they would allow, be allowed a pass on providing a cash deposit when apparently the residential customers are not allowed that privilege. Uh, but really, um, part of my issue with all of this is that all five of you sit as the board on GVID. However, the property owners in GVID can only elect one of you, can only recall one of you. The other four of you sit on this board, but really don't have any skin in the game. And, you know, it, it's kind of frustrating because County Attorney Esplin has opined that actions of this board are not subject to initiative referendum pursuant to an Arizona appellate court case, uh, that I have, uh, listed here as being, um, Hancock versus McCarrill. So, you know, I really feel like this board needs to either create an advisory board of people who do have skin in the game to review this stuff, because the supporting documents don't seem to be very detailed. And as a property owner, I find that concerning. So, you know, maybe you could at least clarify exactly what it is that's being changed, uh, so that those of us who are affected by it and potentially affected by it will actually know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Esposito. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 44? I'll call again. Anyone else wishing to speak to item number 44? Okay, at this point, I'll close the public hearing. And Chair, would entertain a motion or discussion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And second for approval. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, because it is an open public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
Chairman Watson?
Yeah.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Onto the regular agenda. Uh, item number 45. The discussion, possible action for the approval of additions and changes to the personnel policies and procedures, Section 5.1 of the County Employees Driver's Guidelines. And we have Byron Stewart in the audience to answer questions. I have no one signed up to speak to this item. Anyone have questions for Mr. Stewart?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion? And second for the approval of item number 45. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 46. Discussion, possible action for the approval of new Section 5.6 Employee Safety and Loss Prevention to the Personnel Policies and Procedures. Brought to us by Byron Stewart. I have no one signed up for item number 46.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Onto item number 47.
Number 46.
Brought to us by Ms. Lloyd, Financial Services Director. Discussion, possible action. Adopt the 2018-19 tax levies and rates for the Mojave County Tax District Authorities and Acknowledge Tax Levies for Special Districts, School Districts, Fire Districts, Cities and Towns in accordance with the Arizona Revised Statutes 42-17151 and 42-17254. I have no one signed up to speak to item 47. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Lloyd?
Chairman Watson, may I? I don't know if this is really directed at, at Ms. Lloyd, but every year, this comes before us and around our, you know, the end of our budget session. And every year, I grit my teeth to, uh, vote yes on this because it has to do with secondary taxing districts that this board has nothing to do with. We don't get a say. We don't get a vote. And, um, then we have to sort of put our stamp of approval on it. And, you know, it's, the way I see it is my vote is what I have. It's mine. And so this year, we asked to see the statute exactly, I mean, I keep, every year I ask, why do we have to do this? Why do we have to? Because the wording is adopt or approve usually. Those are the two words. Adopt, I mean, but this year we have acknowledge. Acknowledge is a, a little better word. Doesn't make me grit my teeth so much. But in this statute, really, what it says, the only thing that the Board of Supervisors is authorizing is the collection of taxes shall include city and town taxes and shall provide the treasurer with the same powers respecting the collection of city and town taxes and the return and sale of property for delinquent city and town taxes are as conferred with respect to state and county taxes. So, actually, I think, and well, I'll, I'll ask our attorney, all this statute says is that this board has to do is authorize the treasurer to- has to do is authorize the treasurer to collect the taxes. That's how I read it.
Mr. Espeland?
Yes, I agree with that interpretation. However, I think there's more to it than that. And we've talked about this prior hand, and I respect... I absolutely respect Supervisor Angus's position. I can see why she would not want to have her own stamp of approval, so to speak, on a tax that she did not participate in or set. The part that I disagree with her about, and I... I mean, we're reasonable people. We can have disagreements and things like that, is that the way I see it is that we need to... We... When I say "we," excuse me, the board needs to be able to set the... The board has to acknowledge that these secondary taxes have been set and that this is what the rates that the treasurer needs to use going forward. If you look at the statute that Supervisor Angus cited, it says on... And it's 14-17254. "On or before the third Monday in August each year, the County Board of Supervisors shall assess the amount of taxes that is certified as having been levied for city and town purposes." So, this statute is addressing city and town purposes. It's not specifying the special districts, the school districts you're talking about, the fire districts you're talking about, and those kind of things. So, to me, this is specifically for cities and towns, not so much for the other ones. So, I believe that we have... When I say "we," excuse me, the board has a responsibility to acknowledge... That's why we use the word "acknowledge," I believe, right? The word was "acknowledge." Acknowledge that these others have been set and that we... The board... I would recommend the board approve it. If Supervisor Angus is not comfortable with that, she's free to vote in the negative. She's free to vote as she wishes. But the way I see this is the way that it's written, is that we are not setting those rates. I'm sorry, I keep on saying "we." The board... The board is not setting those rates. The board has set the rates for the primary taxes, the primary property taxes. It had set rates for ones where the board is sitting as a district, but beyond those, they are not. You're acknowledging the rest of them.
What is the legal definition of "assess"? Assess the amount of taxes?
Assess is to determine how much the tax will be.
Well, we don't determine that.
And you're not. The other districts have. They have done that.
I can acknowledge it. I mean, it happened. But "adopt," "accept," those are the words I have a problem with.
If you want to... I still don't... I, from a philosophical standpoint, don't feel like this board is setting those rates. What you're doing is you're adopting the rates that have been set by other districts, by other elected boards. I just read it differently.
I would recommend that you bring this up with your state legislature to change the state.
I am going to. Thank you.
I... You know, I looked at it... Supervisor Angus, we looked at another resolution that was passed by a different county, 2016. I just found... Another colleague in my office, Lenore, was kind enough to find this for me and pass it on to me. And in the next year, we could try to massage the words a little bit better, if you wish. Looking at the memo that they drafted, and, you know, they may be wrong too, but I trust if other counties are doing it, usually it's a good practice. The way they describe it is in their memo... And first off, they called it "tax levy and rate adoption." And they said, "The Board of Supervisors statutory role in adopting these property tax levies for other jurisdictions is ministerial only, and the board has no authority to change the amounts of the various levies that have been transmitted to the county." So, I like that word, that it's ministerial only. And although they use the word "adopting," which I know you don't like, that was the word that they used. And in their resolution itself, to help distinguish that, they pointed out the ones where they were responsible for. But in the fourth one, they said, "The Board of Supervisors has received information enabling the board to determine the amount of taxes and/or special assessments to be imposed on property within the various school districts and special taxing districts by or on behalf of those entities." So, they specifically point out that these other ones were passed. So, in the future, we could try to address it that way as well.
Okay. So, you know, I don't want to... Because of sort of the vagueness of this, I don't want to, you know, because it is a wording issue, I don't want to do anything this year that will come back to haunt us or anything. I will probably vote no, but I would like to massage it and make sure the wording... You know, again, it's our vote. It's forever. And I just... I've never liked it. And then, when I read the statute, I did not think it was clear-cut exactly what our role was in this, so... I thank you for all the work that you did, though.
No, I appreciate that. And I think you bring up some great points. I don't like the wording in these two either. I've read this thing multiple times, and I'm just trying to figure out what this means. And I respect Coral's position here. It's her item. I don't want to step on your toes by any means. And if I've misspoken in any way, you can correct me, but that's the way that I read these two. And I think the legislature could clean it up a little bit. I absolutely do. And in the future, perhaps, I could work with Coral next year. We could see about using a couple of different words as well, if you like.
You may want to adopt this as one of your items for the CSA legislative platform.
Bring it up or do it on my, you know, on my own behind-the-scenes. Because it is... It's just a wording thing. It's not a big philosophical.
Sure. Supervisor Bishop?
I have a question for...
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
For Mr. Espeland. If Supervisor Angus votes no, and the rest of the board, or the majority of the vote, also vote no on this, what happens then? Because it has to be accepted, is my understanding. So, what if this board says no? What happens?
Well, I still believe that every board member has a right to vote as they wish. Otherwise, why we even have it? If you can't vote yea or nay, then why even put it on there? So, I believe that a supervisor could exercise the discretion that Supervisor Angus has and vote no if she wishes, or if everybody wishes to. If that were to happen, then the rates would not be set for the treasurer. The treasurer would not be able to collect the taxes. I think it would be a real problem. That's why I recommend that you vote in favor of it. That's my recommendation, is to vote in favor of it because, frankly, I don't know what would happen, but I know that they wouldn't have the statutory authority to collect taxes on behalf of all of these districts. This is the mechanism by which all of these districts set their tax rates, and in order for the treasurer to collect them, we approve this so that the treasurer can then move forward. Supervisor... Coral, would you agree?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
You know, one of the reasons that this is concerning, I think, for a lot of the board members is there's been a mail or go-out to our constituents that a supervisor has raised taxes this year three times. And I think our constituents are getting confused. I think that they think this board is raising taxes when we really don't have any control of the secondary district taxes. So, if we could clean up the wording next year, I think that would be helpful. But for this year, there are people that believe taxes are being raised by this board, and they absolutely are not. In fact, at least in one special district, we lowered the taxes just slightly, but everything else remained the same.
While we're at it, I, as part of this, I wanted to... Because it was just for that, just what Supervisor Bishop was saying. I think there's a thought out there that, you know, most of the taxes come from the county when we are only 17%. And it's these independent... We talk till we're blue in the face, go to the boards, go to the meetings. You do have a say. It's a board just like this. You can have call to Publix and speak your mind because a lot of them, every year, they raise their taxes. There is a cap, and some of them have met their caps. So, this year, I'd asked the treasurer's office to put together what... A couple of different scenarios, different residential and commercial, to see how the taxes were going to be different this year. And they were very hesitant to do that, and I understand it because we hadn't approved everything yet. And some of the information they need to figure out these... And it's why it's important that we do pass it, because they can't start doing that. And I get all that. But I'm going to tell you, and I didn't want to make it public. We'll do it after everything's set. I was surprised that, for the most part, taxes aren't, you know, your final tax, we're not going to look into it, is not... For the most part, is not going up. So, I was happy to see that. I was surprised. But again, that's why this is an important discussion that we have. Again, I wanted to bring it up to remind everybody that the county is 17% of your taxes. Go to your school boards, go to your fire districts, because they are the big part of your pie.
I just have one short comment to make. It is ironic that each one of these different districts is very close to their maximum cap while Mojave County remains about 20% below its cap. So, and we work extremely hard to make sure that that occurs. And I'm just hoping that the constituency understands that these other districts, that they have the opportunity to go and entertain each and every one of those boards at that time. Anna Clark, you're...
Supervisor Johnson has been trying to intervene several times.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just as an FYI.
Supervisor Johnson, I didn't mean to ignore you. I just didn't hear you.
I'm just a quiet fellow, Mr. Chairman. The one thing that I've looked into in the past on the same issue, and Mr. Espeland can jump in if he thinks I'm wrong, but if the board was to vote in the negative against raising or adopting the taxes, the board then could become liable for the school district as we didn't fund it. And that's always been a concern of mine, you know? Why I don't want to raise somebody else's taxes at the same time. I don't want to put our taxpayers in jeopardy of funding different school districts or fire districts because we made a personal stand.
Mr. Espeland?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, that could happen. I just... It's one of those things where if we don't vote in favor of it, I don't know what will happen. That's a possibility, what you described, yeah. But it may not. I just don't know. That's why I recommend that we adopt it. And as you said, we're not raising, we're adopting those, but I'd rather not have to face that, have to research exactly what would happen. I'd rather not have to deal with that.
Thank you, Ms. Espeland. And again, it is ironic that if any of these districts were to fail, that responsibility falls back on this board. So, it's rather interesting. Okay. Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion for item number 47.
You have somebody raising their hand out there.
Pardon?
Somebody has a hand raised.
I don't have anyone signed up for 47, but who do we have? Someone like to speak to item 47?
Barbara Pape, 3908 Jamboi Way. I think I can figure this out. I agree with Supervisor Hildy, and we can rewrite this state, this particular rewrite, this clause. I agree with the... Okay, we should acknowledge, but this board is not responsible for raising taxes. I understand exactly what Hildy wants to do. We do not want to be responsible. You have no vote on the increases, so you can take yourself out of this by telling them we are not responsible for raising taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Any further discussion? With that, Chair would entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion. We approve item number 47, acknowledging that the tax levies for the special districts...
And I'll second the motion. With that, any further discussion? And because of the discussion, probably should be best to have a roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
Well, because of the good-faith discussion that we just had and hoping that next year the wording will be different, I will vote yes this year.
Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Onto item number 48. This is under Mr. Hendrix, sitting as the Board of Directors of Mojave County Television Improvement District. The discussion possible action for the update on the channel repackaging required by the Federal Communications Commission, rulemaking and television spectrum incentive auction to include the impact and cost associated with the changes and provide authorization to staff to procure the needed equipment by the most efficient means possible while minimizing the interruption to services. I have no one listed to speak to item number 48. And I'll make a motion for the approval of item number 48 due to the importance of its...
Mr. Chairman, the Assistant to the County Manager, Von Ohr, would like to speak to the board, if she could.
Certainly.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Just one point of clarification for you. We had some additional quotes come in. So, the only change from the backup I provided to you, I gave you $140,000 to $260,000 price range. We're actually looking at $180,000 to $200,000. And once we do get through this process, I will, of course, provide continual updates to you on expenditures and reimbursements and...
Thank you, Ms. Ohr. I should have looked up to see you.
Chairman Watson, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
You know, we've talked about this before, one of my favorite subjects, TV district. And have we ever thought of asking these networks that run their commercials and make millions of dollars that come through our airways to give a nominal fee, yearly fee, so we could support some of these changes that come away? I mean, that's never happened, and I've never really gotten a good reason why not.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, at this point, we have not done that. Fortunately, on this particular aspect, we do anticipate some level of reimbursement from the Federal Communications Commission. We don't know to the extent at this time. We did reach out to Congressman Gosar and Senator Flake in order to ask them to provide assistance in consideration for the microwave reimbursement portion of this project. So, right now, we have engineering fees, microwave fees, and legal fees that are a third-tier reimbursement. So, it could be about $70,000 that may not be reimbursed. But my plan right now is to defer my capital improvements for this fiscal year in order to pay for this. But getting back to your question, at this time, we have not explored that option.
How would we even go about doing that? Would that be a "we come" thing?
That would probably be more of our legal counsel from DC reaching out to... I mean, we could have the initial conversations.
Can we find out, you know, if that is something... Again, we're kind of unique. I don't know how many other counties or municipalities do this kind of thing, but, you know, it always kind of irked me that these networks just go for free on our system when, you know, they have to pay for other ones, and our constituents are left paying for it. And if we're... You know, I was against it, but if we're going to have it, I want it to be the best it could possibly be. And who knows? They might be happy to pay a nominal fee to keep it going. Vegas gets to air their commercials, you know? We have no local. Hopefully, one day, we will have a local network on. But they make a lot of money.
Okay. We can do some general inquiries.
That would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Bishop?
I just wanted to thank you for all of your hard work on the television district. I know it's a never-ending battle, and I want to thank our constituents and our legislators in DC for helping us get some money back on this. And I think it's a great program, and I know the people in my district really appreciate the free over-the-air TV in Mojave County. So, with that, I agree with Supervisor Angus. We can look into that, and I do second Chairman Watson's motion.
Thank you.
With the increased dollar amount?
Yes, with the noted increase.
Okay. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Onto item number 49. Discussion possible action, public records request process, including illegal opinion, cost, resources, and the number of request pages is directed by the Board of Supervisors at their July 16, 2018 meeting. I have no one signed up to speak to item number 49.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Do we have this kind of a recap that could be given by the county manager on the information that was provided to it?
Thank you. Mr. Hendrix? Mr. Hendricks?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, thank you very much. Again, I've asked Yvonne if she would please answer any questions that the board may have, and she can certainly provide the recap. But I'd like to say, as you can see, from the information that's been provided to the board, the requests that we have received, you know, it's substantial, well, it's more than substantial, it's phenomenal. And I'd like to commend my staff and the rest of the county for being able to field these requests from the public. And they are not, you know, we get requests from the public in general, but we also get a considerable number of the requests are specific to individuals, to a few individuals. But Yvonne Orr takes care of the lion's share, if not all of it, and she also checks everything that actually goes out and verifies that, you know, we're not providing inappropriate information that could damage people. So it's an incredible job that you do, and I want to thank you very much for all your effort that you put into this.
Chairman Watson, board members. This item is in response to Supervisor Johnson's July 16 item, where we were directed to bring back the cost, resources, including number of request pages and staff time it takes to respond to public records requests. As you can see by the backup information, the amount is overwhelming that the department is still with. In this, in our response, we provided to you the existing policy, the existing public records request form, legal opinion prepared by Ryan Espin, so any legal questions, I'll of course defer that way. And there is a detailed list of elected officials and department reports. I also put in front of your seats today and provided to Supervisor Johnson on Friday a couple of lists from the county manager's office for the years of 2016 and 2017. I provided these specifically because there was some problems pointed out at the last meeting where records were requested and not picked up. On the 2017 report in particular, I'll go back to that one. On page two, it's the last bolded item. There was a request from Mr. Robinson about salary history of the county manager's office, flood, public works, Chris Ballard, Tim Walsh. The research takes quite a bit of time, and this is a box of records that wasn't picked up on that particular item. So you have staff resources from finance, from development services, from administration, hours and hours of time put into these records, and then someone comes in and takes a picture on their phone of a couple of records. So it just creates a little bit of frustration. I might add, though, that working with IT, they have found a couple of measures to make things a little bit more efficient for us. If you see in the county administration portion, there is now 242 records that have been asked and answered via Web QA, which is a system that we have put in place just since January. IT and administration are also taking a look at a couple of other options to make the transmission of records easier. We can now send emails electronically instead of having to print them out, and people come in and pick up just boxes of paper. I'd like to also highlight just some of the heavy hitters on some of these reports. The sheriff's office, for one individual's request, they estimated in excess of 240 hours. County attorney on the ARIA litigation, 40 to 45 hours. The clerk of superior court estimates 12 hours per day. And for the months of April, May, and June of 2008 alone, they handled 672 public requests and 366 agency requests. Administration, I hit on the Web QA, but we have 1,020 requests from 2006 to 2018. Development services spent approximately 830 hours of staff time from 2015 to present. Financial services estimated 175 hours of staff time, or $8,225 in salary hours, with estimated document count of 5,823 pages. So staff, all departments countywide are being hit pretty substantially by the numerous requests, and yes, we're required to do it. Anything additional, Supervisor Johnson, that you'd like me to capture in there?
Yes, ma'am. Are we, what is the average length of time to respond to a FOIA request? I know it's somewhere longer with detail, but just on a regular general one, what is the average time?
I would say if it's routine county documents easily accessible, that the response time should be under five to 10 days. If it's not a routine request, for instance, the example that I gave in my agenda communication, that one, and thanks to the patience of the requestor on that one, it took us a couple of months. We had, sometimes we have to go back and ask for clarification if we're not certain on what the document is. They're asking for emails, staff has to go through emails individually to ensure that there is no attorney-client privilege in there, no personnel issues. So I believe in this one, we had 48 pages of 50 documents, of 50 emails each that we had to go through. So it's, there's quite a variety of response time on this.
So in the reviewing of the FOIA request, did we find, or did our attorney find, or did anybody in management find that it looks like we're dragging our feet, or are we making them available as quickly as possible?
Nothing that I'm aware of that is showing an excessive delay. Anytime from an administration perspective, that it's going to be longer than anticipated, we do reach out to the requestor, make them aware of our concerns, ask them to re-clarify what exactly they're looking for, and give them a timeframe. From the legal perspective, I'll have to have Ryan answer that.
Supervisor Johnson, the catchphrase, the term that's important here is that we have to give a prompt response, a prompt action. I think the exact, I can give you the exact language, it, let me just double check, yeah, promptly furnish is the terms that is used. And that fluctuates based on the type of case, and the type of request, and the type of information that's being asked. For example, this last week, I handled an elections matter, or, excuse me, the last two weeks have been handling elections matter that involve public records requests, and between me and the recorder, Kristy Blair, we were getting back to them as quickly as we could, which was within the same day or the next day. Other times, you'll get a request where you've got, you know, 1,000 pages, it's not going to happen in a day. It could take a month, it could take more than that. So it really is, it depends on the circumstances of the case, what is, the circumstances of the request, what is promptly furnish? And I know from my end, we try to get it out to them as quickly as we can. I've got one on my desk right now that I just got from another department, and it's just, I'll get to it as quickly as I can and hopefully get it out by the end of this week. And so I think generally, the staff does a good job of that, at least my observations of looking at the various departments, they jump on it as quickly as they can, and it really depends on the size, the type of request, how much redaction has to go into it. But I think for the most part, I think the departments do that.
Okay, so that was my biggest concern, was that we're getting them out as quickly as we can, nobody's dragging their feet. And I think with the numbers that Ms. Orr has brought forward, people are seeing exactly the amount of time that it's taking to answer some of these FOIA requests, which goes into the hundreds of hours, and we have to remember that we just don't have people that are FOIA clerks. Most of the time, it has to be a senior member of our staff to go through these requests, because like you say, and Ms. Orr mentioned, it has to be checked for any information that is, you know, shouldn't be released due to personnel issues or items like that. And when we're getting certain requests that Supervisor Watson brought up that are being made and not even picked up, it really does delay the amount of time that it takes to get all the FOIA requests done, plus the amount of time it takes away from people actually doing the job they're paid for. Would that be correct?
That is correct. This is an additional to our regular duties.
I guess those are the only questions I have right at this moment. I appreciate the time, because I think it was important that we got it out so people know that we're responding as quickly as we can. Obviously, when the demand is higher, it's going to take a little longer, and like you were mentioning, something with the recorder's office, you know, right now, they're doing early voting, so it's kind of tough to, you know, throw in something, a request in while they're doing early voting, because obviously, early voting is important, and so is their FOIA request, so they want to make sure they do both correctly, but it just adds to the demands put upon our people who are pretty much short-staffed anyway. I think those are the only questions I have, and I appreciate the time and effort that went into this to bring it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson. Well done. And Ms. Orr, well done. Thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Orr.
Ms. Orr?
On the one example that you gave, the photograph of the large box of records, I assume that those had to be copied and then redacted, and then copied again.
I personally didn't take a look at the box before I came down, I'm sorry. I don't know if there was a lot of redaction that went in, but they were, had to be pulled from several different departments, compiled. And then, in addition, staff has to sit with the person who comes to take a look at the records and thumbs through them while they, you know, so you have staff time dedicated there as well.
So is, can we legally charge a deposit for a records request that's going to be a paper request? Because obviously, the time it would take to scan each one of these documents in that large box would not be feasible to do. So if it's a large request, can we ask for a monetary deposit to make sure that they really want those records?
Fortunately, you said...
And then, as part of that same question, how long do we have to keep a box of records before we can destroy them? Because if we destroy them and they come back six months later and say, "I wanted that", can you clarify that?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, fortunately, you said that buzzword in there, legal?
Mr. Chairman, and I'll jump in, even though I'm not legal, but somebody can come in to a government office and request to view documents, and we cannot charge them for it. However, if they want copies of that document, that's when we're able to charge for the copies. We're not able to charge for the research, we're not able to charge for the time we spent compiling and preparing, and we're not able to charge for any time we spend overseeing the review. But we are responsible for the security of those documents, so that pretty much prompts us from having, to have somebody available there to protect those documents. So if you came into the office and said, "Mike, I want to see all the files on this particular issue that you have, I have to either prepare them for you to be able to review, free of charge," or, not me, it's my staff, but I can't charge you for it unless you ask specifically for a copy. Do you mind if I chime in there?
Mr. Espin, go ahead.
So Manager Hendricks is correct, if somebody wishes to view documents at the location, we cannot charge them for that. But if they ask for copies, we can. To answer your question about a deposit, it's unclear, it's uncertain. I brought up this question to other county, other civil deputies throughout the state. We met together, and we were discussing various legal issues, and I asked the specific one. And I know one county in particular, they will, what they'll do is they will demand payment upfront, is one thing that they do. I don't know if that's a great practice, but the statute doesn't specifically say what you can or cannot do, it just says you can charge. But that county asks them in front, and what they do is they anticipate, they say, "Okay, we think that this is how much it's going to cost, this is how much it's going to be, so we anticipate that it'll cost this much amount of money." And then they'll have them make payment upfront.
Okay, and then when...
Just similar to a deposit.
When we have those documents, is there a time period that we have to retain them before we assume that they don't really want the document?
No, that's a retention issue. That's a separate issue of how long are we supposed to retain documents, and then you have to look at your retention schedule. That's a separate issue, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Just a point of interest, if I might, one of the programs that IT is taking a look at has a retention, that all requests go online, all responses go online. So in the event that somebody is asking for a duplicate record, we can just refer them to something that already exists. So as we continue to look at these programs with IT, we'll let you know if we find something that might be viable and make life easier for staff.
Thank you, Ms. Orr.
I don't know if we really ever got an exact answer about the deposit. So if another county does it, and they ask for pretty much the whole thing, can you check to find that out? I don't think that's unreasonable, and you say, and they're estimating it based on, because we're only charging for the copies, right? We're not charging for anything, the time and all that. I think that was, I think it was pretty obvious that these things, and I hope everyone realizes, takes a lot of time, but legally, we can only charge for the copies, not for the time.
We don't charge for the time.
So when this other county is doing that, they're only charging for the estimated, how much they think that their copies are going to be? Can we do something like that?
I'd be happy to look into contacting that particular county that told that to me. I think I remember which county it was, there was multiple counties there, but I believe I remember which county it was, and I can contact that person and kind of get the logistics of what they're doing.
I also think it's good, because, you know, sometimes maybe the person making the request doesn't realize how much it is, and then when they come and they hear it's, you know, "We had something going on like that, it was like $500, they didn't count on it", and so maybe if they know upfront, they'll maybe narrow their request or something, so it'll be better for them as well.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, and I just want to clarify that we've had a request to say, "I want to see all the work orders for the road department from 2017, 2018, or 2017 and 2018", all the work orders. So we get a pile of daily work orders, or daily logs, and so we can't just make copies of those and say, "Okay, that's 5,000 copies, we want to charge you 25 cents per copy." We tried that, that's the way we used to do business. And because we believe that, you know, if they requested something, we would provide it in copy form. And then we had that pushback from the person from the public to say, "No, I just want to look at them." And if you read the statute right here, it says, "I can come in free of charge, and I can look to my heart's content, and you can't charge me for it." However, if I see something of interest, like out of the 5,000 documents, I see two documents that I want to make, have copies of, after all of that work, we end up saying, "Okay, here's your two copies, could you please give us 50 cents?" And that's where we add on charging a bond, or charging a deposit, or anything like that. Generally, they don't want that box of material, they want to look through it, and then they want to pick and choose what they desire to have, to take with them. And not, I want to also make it clear to the board that the county views that service, this service, as part of the cost of doing business, because it is mandated by law that we provide this. So it's part of our cost, and it's part of something that's just necessary for us to do, no matter how burdensome it is. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Any further discussion? I don't know that this item has anything to define or for the directive. I'll entertain any thoughts any person has as far as a direction for staff. And we'll accept...
I did ask, I mean, if I can do something, I did request that if the staff could explore the possibility and the precedent for charging a deposit.
That is fair.
Okay.
Okay. No action? No action then on 49?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, on to item number 50. Discussion, possible action. Direct the county manager to work with the information technology department and individual departments to formulate a countywide social media management policy to be used when representing the official capacity of Mojave County on any social media platform. Supervisor Johnson brings our attention to this item. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I brought this forward, as we know, the Facebook and all the other social media platforms have grown quite a bit since we did our last policy and procedures. And I've noticed some errors that have been made, have been pointed out to me on certain of our platforms. And I would just make a recommendation that we would give it to staff to come back with a new policy and sort of a chain of command as to who is in charge and who handles or approves any postings of Facebook pages or anything to do with Mojave County in official capacity, not elected officials, of course, but a staff to make sure that we do not get ourselves and the taxpayers in trouble.
Very good. And thank you for bringing this item to our attention. Any further discussion?
Yeah. I'm glad Supervisor Johnson brought this up. As social media expands, and as all of our presence, whether, you know, we've all done things, we've all gotten in trouble at one time or another, we've been, we've had lawyers come in and explain some of the legal ramifications for being on Facebook and Twitter. And I think we've come to a point where we really do need a set policy. I know elected officials, it's a little different, but I would like to see that as well, to tell you the truth. But because of that, later down in the agenda, I have an agenda item that I hope will help rectify some of those problems. I think what Supervisor Johnson is saying, we have different departments putting out different information, it doesn't go through one, I think that's the problem, it doesn't go through one avenue. You have Public Works doing one thing, you've got Emergency Management doing another one. And we saw some problems, and I think Supervisor Johnson will agree with me, like, for example, during the Willow Fire, we had no one place where people could go to get information. So the supervisors were getting information from Emergency Management, and I was posting stuff, because of the immediacy of it. I was posting stuff, and Supervisor Johnson was posting things, and no one, and the media doesn't know where to go. I think at this point, we need to, and we'll, again, talk about later, discuss the idea of having a communications director, PIO, whatever you want to call them, that all of these requests, information will go through. I think it will take a lot of pressure and responsibility off of, again, our overworked staff. I know that we have different department heads writing press releases. We're a big county. We have a lot of information that our constituents need to know, should know, and it should all come from one entity. So we're not getting, you know, no one, no one department head is getting into trouble. Another example, when I first took office, there was that big bus accident out there in Dolan Springs, a bus overturned. I was down in Phoenix, and I was getting calls from like the Associated Press, they didn't know who to call. So, again, I'm just pitching for my next agenda item, but I think it's, this can be addressed in that one.
Thank you, Ms....
Chairman Watson.
Yes, Supervisor Bishop.
I would like to see Mojave County go to a county Facebook page that's, one person would control that page, instead of having 13 different county department pages. I think that's confusing to the constituents, and I think you, some departments have a Facebook page, some don't. So I'm kind of in tune with Supervisor Angus. We get to this other agenda item, we can discuss that further. But I see Nathan is in the audience, I wonder if we might ask him for his input?
Morning, Chairman, Board members.
Morning.
What specific question would you like me to answer? I mean, I can give you some background, as far as the way I see it.
I would like to know your opinion, and also, your thoughts on just a single Mojave County Facebook page where all departments can have a person assigned to make posts, or would a certain person be in charge of the overall Facebook page? How would that work? What are your thoughts?
I think it's a complex task. I think there's a large number of departments throughout the county. I think it would be really difficult to have a single Facebook presence that represented, let's say, 15 different departments. So I can understand the concept of departments want to have their own platform and be in control, basically, their information that goes out. Perfect example would be a community library in Havasu. I believe they have their own Facebook page. And I think, from their business process standpoint, they have summer activities for youth, they have a lot of community activities, and community programs. And I think that's where the need for use of social media kind of evolved within the county from the beginning. So you have lots of different outlets of information per the different business process. It would be challenging to have a single Facebook presence with all of the activities and all of the business processes throughout the entire county being represented through that one outlet. If you take a look at the county's website now, we have a section, when you scroll down to the bottom, it says, "Follow us on," and there's basically a button for Twitter, Facebook, and YouTube. The county has a single YouTube presence, which is where we put all of the board meeting videos at, our planning and zoning commission meetings. But there's also those specific things on Twitter for different outlets of information. And something that IT has been trying to do is, we've been trying to take a funnel approach, or I always say it's like a radio station. If you're interested in Mojave County, then the @MojaveCounty Twitter account would be a great way to get all of the information, basically, I give, re-syndicated through that same one. So there's, I think, possibility to have departments operating their own social media platforms and live within the policies and procedures that exist today. And I know that you're coming, you're bringing this up because there's a need for a policy, and I would like to remind everybody, there is policy. In our personnel policies and procedures, we added a technology use segment, I think, last year. And inside that, there is a social media usage section that outlines some of the behaviors and how the social media is supposed to be used. And in general, social media is supposed to be used the same way any tool is used for county business, whether that's a dump truck, a blade, a jackhammer. The responsible use of that tool is supposed to be done by the employee with oversight from their manager or supervisor. So if there's misuse of that tool taking place, I would say that that's something that the department head or elected official needs to be made aware of, so that they can do coaching, counseling, or potentially, discipline.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, and I second what Nathan said. I certainly don't disagree with Supervisor Angus that we need a PIO. And, you know, I, we have brought that forward to the board in prior meetings. But we've got alert, you know, notifications, we've got road closure notifications, they're department-specific. We've got the Health Department notifications, that's department-specific. It would be difficult for one individual to actually have the knowledge and the wherewithal, let alone probably take at least the department, to actually control all that stuff, because a large segment of each one of our departments has a portion for social media, and it's incredibly important in discussions with our users and with the communities. You know, it's information that needs to get out. I think the communities know how to get that information, and know where to access it from. But like Nathan said, our directors of the department should be directly responsible for ensuring that the social media that's being used is being used properly. If they're not, and their social media is not being used properly, I have never gotten a complaint. Your county manager has never gotten a complaint. So there's nothing that I can act on and actually provide guidance and direction to my directors regarding any misuses of this. So what I would suggest is, maybe we do need to take a look at revisiting our policies and procedures, talking to the different supervisors, and making sure your concerns are addressed, beef up our policies and procedures, bring it back to the board, have you all look and make a business decision on moving forward with an updated program. And then, if you do have issues with postings or uses, contact me, and I can address it with my directors.
Chairman Watson. My concern is more of the legal. You know, amongst all the other things that our department directors do, there's no possible where they can keep up with some of the legal changes. And these things are changing, you know, constantly, the legal definitions, and what you can do, what you can't do, how quickly you have to respond. So I would, although I understand, you can, I don't see that as an IT job, to do that. I mean, I don't. So I think it's part of this bigger communications position, that would be, that position would be responsible to keeping up on the law, making sure everyone is apprised of it. I just think the time has come, because, you know, frankly, government entries are getting into trouble with all the, a lot of their social media. We just want to make sure that we are, we're in compliance, and we're doing, and everybody knows, you know, what's up. And I think we're very lucky that we have it, and I think it's to the good work. But again, as things change, and it's getting uglier out there, so we just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page.
Very good.
Chairman Watson, do you mind if I take a minute just to kind of show you the flow of information that IT has been trying to demonstrate for the county? And I'm not sure if you're all aware of this, but I'd like to show you this real quick. Jeremy, can you put the laptop up? I'm going to go to the county website here. So this is the main county website, and, you know, county news, top stories, this is our primary source of information when it comes to like communicating to the general public. So I would say, while this isn't Facebook or Twitter, this is the start of the information flow of what should be coming out, an official Mojave County social media site. So something that we've done recently, in an effort to try to connect all of the dots and have a really good flow of information, is we've integrated some functionality with the official Mojave County Twitter website, which is @MojaveCounty. So what occurs is, anytime the county manager's office uses the press release tool that we developed on the website, the code dynamically echoes that to the @MojaveCounty Twitter account. And the idea behind that is, as a citizen of Mojave County, you can follow the @MojaveCounty Twitter site, and then you're going to get instant notifications of every press release we put out, all of the calendar events, and all of the videos. So the use of the press release tool and expanded functionality of this concept makes it a lot easier for us as an entity to have a social media presence that is following a specific policy or procedure, because there's not a human being that's doing these tweets. It's something that we programmatically designed to be a function of the use of our website as we disseminate information to people. So it's an automated approach that basically eliminates the possibility of potential misuse from an official Mojave County outlet. And I actually agree with Supervisor Angus, a PIO would be, I think, a great thing for the county, because it would give us some type of centralized oversight into the official face of the county on social media.
Thank you. Okay, we have one person that has signed up for this item, and I see we have another person that is anxious to speak to the item. So Ms. Esposito, if you'd come down, please.
Jennifer Jones Esposito, address previously stated. Well, I do first want to thank Supervisor Johnson for bringing this forward. I agree with Supervisor Angus, that is long overdue. And while there is a component to addressing the flow of information that comes from the county, it really, a lot of this comes down to controlling case law and legal opinions. You have a balancing point when addressing only county employees. You have a balancing point between free speech and the interests of the county. I mean, obviously, if there was something that was not appropriate to be made for public consumption, it would be a problem if, you know, there, or, and then you have the issue of whether or not someone is a whistleblower on something going on in their department. But you have to protect the free speech rights of county employees. That being said, any policy should absolutely govern the social media content of the elected officials. And I say that because there was a Supreme Court case ruling that President Trump could not block people who were critical of him from social media. There are other cases going on. This has happened here in Mojave County. For instance, Supervisor Bishop, you put up a post, which I have, I've collected dozens of screenshots of her posts, but she essentially said, "I'm using this to communicate county business to constituents," and then went on to block constituents, then unblock them after complaints were filed with the ACLU of Arizona, then take down her Facebook page. Now, similar posts to some of the things that she had put up deriding her constituents or appearing under an account in her husband's name, maybe it's just a coincidence. But considering that the courts have ruled that if you're an elected official and you communicate business of the county to your constituents, it's considered the public square, in the same way that this meeting is considered the public square. And you're not allowed to block them from posting or from seeing your posts, you know, I think from a legal point of view, and again, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just somebody who has a good legal mind, my best recommendation would be that elected officials stick to posting, you know, selfies in the car, and what they had for lunch, and pictures of their dog, and go through an official page for communicating with constituents where those people aren't blocked. Otherwise, they should disable comments from their posts, so that they can receive private input, say, on Facebook through Messenger. And that way, they're not blocking their constituents' input, but you're not fighting constantly this battle of, "This one hates me, this one likes me, I'm being trolled by a woman who's a German citizen, can't vote here, thinks I'm too conservative, trolling me all over Facebook." I haven't blocked her, I haven't blocked anybody, but I think that we need to address this, because both Mosley and Biassucci are blocking people on Facebook, and they might be elected officials soon, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the elected officials, social media, that is an issue, too, and I think it needs to be addressed. And again, whoever would be in control would be, it would be up to them to keep apprised of all the laws. I think we've all sort of learned things the hard way. You know, we try, we try to do the best we can, we're only human, you know, our feelings get hurt, and, you know, we don't like to be lied about. But there are laws now, and I know there are people in this room who had a part in that. So I see that, I think we need somebody that keeps up to date with everything, all the changing, moving parts of social media, and that we are up to date on all of that. Plus, plus, I do think that what people do on their work time on social media has to be controlled. You know, is, again, it's almost like taking the knee. When you're at your workplace, you know, what are the rules? I've been, again, told two different things about elected official staff who are on work time, talking about things that have nothing to do with work, political things. So I think all of these need to be addressed, as uncomfortable as they are.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Angus. And I heard the word lunch mentioned by the previous speaker, and I would request a BLT, I think. But, okay, we have, Ms. Morgane, I believe, would like to speak to this issue.
Thank you.
And after that, I believe, we'd take a 10-minute break for everyone's comfort.
Jam Morgane, again, District 1 constituent. Buster, Supervisor Johnson, I know you're not here, but I'm extremely thrilled to see this item on the agenda, personally. I am absolutely wanting to support the idea of the social media policy to be updated. Two salient points that I'd like to add into the conversation is, the Arizona statutes have recently, or in the process of being updated, with respect to open meeting law, and updating that law is taking into consideration that social media is an official public forum. And so that's why the state law is being changed to integrate that. I know we talked about that at the Tri-City Council meeting where I attended. So that definitely needs to be integrated into any changes in the social media policy. And also, I will reiterate what Jennifer Jones Esposito talked about. It's not just elected officials, it's anyone who's managing the county official social media platform needs to take into consideration that. I am one of those people who has been involved with litigation. The ACLU was representing my case against Representative Gosar, who was blocked... The ACLU was representing my case against Representative Gosar, who was blocking hundreds of constituents. That lawsuit forced him to unblock every single one of those hundreds of constituents. It forced him to modify his social media policy to be consistent with the United States Constitution, and it forced him to retrain his staff that they cannot discriminate for viewpoint discrimination, they cannot block or delete or hide comments based on, that's First Amendment language, or you can't violate someone's constitutional First Amendment rights of free speech in an official public capacity. So even if it's not elected officials who are managing the county's page, they still need to be following these policies. And you're absolutely right, the technology is far developing faster than our ability to monitor and develop policies. So I'm just extremely thrilled to see the county to be engaging with this issue and updating your social media policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgane. Okay, I think we require a motion to direct the county manager.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion to direct the county manager to work with the IT Department to formulate a countywide social media management policy as discussed.
And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. As I mentioned before, at this point, we'll take a 10-minute break.
Resume the meeting. Call order. And we have item 51, discussion, possible action pursuant to Arizona revised statutes 38-431, P.O. 3, portions A, 3, and 4, for the purpose of consultation for legal advice from the attorney. I believe that we've accomplished that. Probably no action on this item?
No action is necessary.
Thank you. On to item 52, discussion, possible action, review of custom ops BMX development, operation, and maintenance of public bicycle riding recreational facility on approximately 2.7 acres of county leased Bureau of Land Management land designated for the BMX recreation and competition use at the southeast corner of Hancock Road and Highland Road in Bullhead City, and that is within Section 20. I have a number of people wishing to sign up for item number 52. Michael Nesbit.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to request that you terminate the lease between Custom Ops BMX and the county for Section 20 BMX facility. Custom Ops BMX has failed the members of the community with their inability to provide a safe and clean facility. Mr. Henry was here last September stating he had a team ready to go to make the facility safe and fun for all. He said the dirt was unsafe and he was going to replace it with finer clay, less rocks, and stuff like that, pretty much make it a good, nice facility. It took him almost five months and me constantly speaking with Supervisor Angus to try to figure out when he was actually going to open the facility. And when he did, he ended up using the same unsafe dirt that he promised he was going to replace. So, I'm not really sure why it was unsafe then and now it's safe. He had eight months to get the facility safe and clean and he's failed to do so. The starting hill is all cement. They poured loose dirt over it, so the dirt falls down off the back and it becomes very slippery for you to keep grip, especially for little kids. The first major race they had, I personally helped just about 10 kids from sliding down the hill into two-foot-tall metal poles that are sticking out of cement that's used to keep them in there. The bleachers aren't within mandated regulations like the lease states. It poses a risk to children, anyone that may happen to fall, and there's no guardrail or no backing between the footboards and seatboards. The premises, the outside's lined with weeds. To me, it's very unappealing. There are chunks of curb that are in the parking lot which have since been moved to the side of the parking lot, but still in the parking lot. And there's RNC fence posts inside the fence, like in the facility where the kids ride. There's no set driveway for this business either, which is to me very unsafe because they're having people drive over the nature trail that's there right now. There's no lighting on that trail, so if someone's to ride their bike or walk across it and the car doesn't see them, that can be very catastrophic. The building located on the property, it has six busted-out windows, and they've been this way for a little over six months now. The windows have probably close to six-inch-long shards of glass sticking out of the window frame from it being broken. Those haven't even been knocked out to make for at least a smooth, semi-safe clean. And then there's also an AC unit that's been taken out of the building, so it's just an open hole in the wall now. We're in monsoon season with the rain and stuff that's coming through. If that gets into the insulation or the drywall, it could create mold and very potential health hazard for people that are supposed to be inside that building. And then there's fence posting in the parking lot. They make them for riders to get ready for races. They're called chutes. There's four of those that don't have caps on them, so it's just an open pipe. And to me, it's very dangerous because kids jump on those all the time and if someone gets cut. I'll wrap it up. Based on those seven safety violations of the lease agreement, I'm asking the board to uphold Provision 6 and terminate the lease between Mojave County and Custom Ops BMX. There have been four other issues that I've had to bring forward without Supervisor Angus and forced him to correct, but how long are we going to allow him to roam and fix what he wants fixed when someone gets brought up?
Thank you very much. Your time's up. Thanks, sir. Ternell Henry?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. I stand before the board to update progress at the BMX track located on Section 20 and respond to the allegations made by Michael Nesbit. I can sum it up in four words: preposterous, okay? Untrue, and it comes down to exaggerated. Some of these things on this property have been there for 10 years. 10. 10 years. Yeah, the dirt and all the things he said was unsafe, but you know, we had stuff that was allocated to us to use. New dirt, which was sold from under us. I went to a Kiwanis seminar and I also went to a Kiwanis, I did a presentation for Kiwanis and met the mayor of Bullhead and he sent us in the right direction and we got the right dirt. You know, I have a business license that put me in charge of that facility to do it at my pace. Of course, there are so many things in that property that needs, and we had to go in and we had to start from scratch. So, you know, I can say that most of everything that he says has some validity, but he talks about the weeds that are on the premises. They go along that boardwalk and I tell you, everybody who's ever come to this track has always driven across it. There's no designated parking, I'm sorry, no designated driveway. There's one designated driveway that comes through the annex building up front. One. It's always been there. So, these things have been there for day one. You know, it's like the bleachers. The bleachers have been there forever. I had my business license approved and I had, I want to say I had the, it's, what is it? It's zoning, it's your zoning, your planning zoning, fire department, and your building department show up there and write these things off and they saw none of these things as being unsafe. They signed off for me to get my business license. I talked about other things that are just, I think, frivolous. And he goes around taking pictures and, you know, in order for him to talk about the windows, the windows, he said they're six-inch shards. That must have been an early photo because there are no six-inch shards in that window and it wouldn't have been approved otherwise. The property has never been cleaner or safer. I'm putting in a lot of hours there and I've spent over $10,000 of my own money into the, to put out into that facility. You asked me, was I willing to do that, just like we did in Kingman? Yes. The question is yes. You know, but there's no money coming in. Okay? But I'm still there doing my thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Priscilla Sorabia? I'm sure I mispronounced your last name, but I apologize.
It's Priscilla Sorabia. Good morning. I'm here to kind of support the Bullhead Track. My, most of my family races and my daughter is now eight years old. She's been racing at the Bullhead Track or in the competition area of BMX since she was two. I could honestly say that the Bullhead Track now is probably the safest and cleanest it has ever been. There's only so much work one person can do. That track is clean, there's no rocks. I have never worried about my daughter's safety or anybody in my family's safety at that track. I actually compliment Ternell all the time because every time we drive by, no matter what time it is, he is out there working on that track, whether he is by himself or he has help. Ternell has had to cancel once due to the heat and heat advisory, and I give this guy tons of credit because I don't think we've ever had a track official that would cancel and still go out there and work. He did what was right for the kids and for the families, but he was still out there working to make the track a better place. And the reopening of the Bullhead Track when we had our Olympic Day, it was a great feeling to see that facility alive again. The two years that that track has been closed, we have had to travel to many other tracks and support other communities just for our kids to race and have fun when we feel we could have supported our own. We've had to drive to California on weekends, Vegas on school nights, just so our kids can stay active. They're very athletic, they do not want to give up the sport, and we're just, we're very happy to have Ternell at the track. In any way, does any of the nine members of my family, my kids, immediate family, my other half, none of us have ever felt that that track was unsafe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Angus, do you have any?
Yeah, well, first I want to thank Ternell for coming and sitting for another long meeting in order to respond to some allegations. And I put this, I wanted to make sure this was on the agenda because there were safety allegations being made. And once they're made, they have to be responded to. And now I expect the Parks Department to make sure, and that's, can you come up and, Mr. Barton? Can I ask? So, what is the county now going to do? What is the process to oversee? Did you have a process before? Did anyone go out there and make sure that everything was as it should be? I mean, my office is right next to it, my assistant goes there, and you know, we've never seen anything bad. We've seen everything is, you know, there were some, I mean, we've got wind, we've got weather, things happen. We understand that. But I want to know what the Parks Department does in these cases when we do lease out land. We do have, we do have some responsibility in it, so I want to know what yours, what the process is.
Sure, absolutely. Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, I personally have been out to that site three different times. And when Mr. Nesbit presented the safety findings, I immediately went out that week to take a look at it. I did include photographs within your agenda packet. They also are on the monitor here if we wanted to show them to the public on it. It is Park's opinion that Mr. Ternell Henry has made progress. He's really done a lot of good things to make the facility safer. We can continue monitoring it, continue, I can continue, Supervisor Angus, sending you information on the progress they're making. And I think we need to point out that the time that it took for when the lease was first appointed last August to when the lease is approved, there was quite a bit of back-and-forth with regards to the insurance. And so, none of that was really on, you know, Mr. Ternell Henry's fault. That was here, the county was working with, actually with legal and, you know, Custom Ops BMX ensured that we had proper insurance coverage, which we do now on it. And at that point in time, it took about two months for Mr. Henry to open it up, which it opened up in March 2018. And it has, it has been vacant for quite a few years. They've done a lot on it, and I'm sure Mr. Henry has a lot more that he does want to do on it. And here again, from Park's standpoint, we will ensure and continue to monitor it.
And the contract is for how long?
The contract's a four-year lease.
It's a four-year lease. And as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Ternell, Mr. Henry's doing everything that he has promised to do. I can't help, you know, things that people say. I just want to make sure that the county's part in it is that we feel confident. And if the Parks and Public Works are, tell me, tell this board that you're okay, then I'm willing to, you know, I'm ready to just put this to rest and let Mr. Henry do what he does and make it. I know it's a, something that doesn't make a lot of money, but I do know a lot of families use it. And I've heard nothing but good things in the community. So, I'm sorry again that you had to sit here and I'm hoping this is the last time.
Thank you.
I have some questions, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson, yes.
Thank you. I guess it would be for our Parks Director. When we put this contract in place, did we have any kind of a performance clause?
When the contract is put together, Supervisor Johnson, the areas that we stress in the contract was, one, for insurance. We stress that the site be cleaned up, progress be made, and the fencing is up. And then also be submitted a financial annual report. Those are the key factors that were included in the lease.
So, how many, how many kids have been out there so far?
And I would actually defer to Mr. Ternell Henry to answer that question.
The number of participants on your, on your property is the question?
Yeah. Ternell Henry stated 140, Supervisor Johnson.
140 kids? That's all with total, with all the events we should have held? How many events were held? We should have weekly racing, correct?
Here we go. Why don't I have Mr. Henry come up to the podium?
Mr. Ternell?
Hello Supervisor Johnson. The, the amount of racing done is done on, on, once a week. So, we have, if you count from March when I sent the email to Hal, it was 18 Fridays. And as Priscilla said, there was one cancellation. There was not one. There was six. Six cancellations due to rain, heat, and me being out of town a couple times. But we only race or participate once a week. It used to have two days, but potentially to the end of the year with the one day, you're looking at about 38 Fridays. And that's not including what I cancel based on weather or heat or whatever.
Does that answer your question Supervisor Johnson?
Well, I'm familiar with the one we have down here because my first term, we ran, ran part of that and we set up free air shows and, and all sorts of events like that. It doesn't sound like they're doing any of that. And we're not getting to very many kids. We have no practice days where the kids can come out and practice or anything like that?
No. The practice days are being held on the same day of race day, so we have practice events and we have race events. Until I include a second day, there will only be Fridays. There are four of the tracks in the district, Yuma, Sarah Park, which is Lake Havasu, and then the other track that I manage, which is the Kingman Track. That track ended up back in my hands. Every one of those tracks have two days, and so the days are very narrowed. It's, there's only one day left for us to do anything until I do something with the Kingman schedule so that they can coexist. If you look at back in the...
And this isn't a, this isn't anything reflecting on you, but it seems like we as a county probably didn't do our best to put together a contract because we should have been trying to get more kids involved, whether it's, you know, at professional level or just, you know, being kids out there. But I would think we'd need more stringent requirements of how many people should be participating, how the numbers should be going up, hours that we should be open. I mean, it's, Bullhead deserves just as good a track as Havasu or, or Kingman. That would be my only thought, but it sounds like we didn't put together a very good contract on our part.
The attrition in this sport is virtually 60%. It's throughout. It's throughout. It's Sarah Park, it's everyone. Like I said, I have the Kingman Track and Chairman Watson, you were there at the finals that they had there, the state finals. We do have a state qualifier coming up that is scheduled here. We also have a Race for Life scheduled here, which is at the end of the week. We have a scholarship race scheduled in December. You know, it's only so much you can do. The attrition in this sport, that's one of the reasons why I was brought into this, because I work closely with the USA BMX, the attrition all over is bad. But I'm with one of the largest tracks in the, in the United States with the number five track in the nation, and they're on Wednesdays. And they do an average of 100 riders. That is what we're looking for. You had 70 riders show up for that, for that Olympic Day race, 70. And you had six brand-new members last Friday. So, the numbers are getting better, but you know, it's a start of business. You know, you, you have, you have a track record on this track now. It's been closed for two years. And you know, we have, we have people that are trying to gain and regain our trust before they even come back to the facility. There's a lot of work to be done.
Thank you.
I guess going along with that, do you have the, you know, the monetary means to do whatever it takes to make this a successful track?
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, I've had sponsors bail on me, you know, and you know whose credit cards bear the burden, mine, you know? And I'm in debt because of it, but you know what? I just keep plugging along because I'm in it for the right reasons.
I guess that was the only question I have.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson.
Do you have any staff?
That, you know, until I can afford to bring in, you know, workers comp, that's in your contract. We have to use the, what we call the volunteer-based help. And therein lies the problem because, you know, the life of a track operator is lonely. I have to be out there long hours. There's days when we race and the races are ending, you know, we spend like an hour and a half or two doing races and then I'm, I'm still working on the track to get it ready for next week and I'm out there till 3 o'clock in the morning. But I do have people who are helping and I think you'll see more with the development of this track. I mean, it just, you just can't just drop a track out there and say, here we are, you know, let's get 100 riders going. You got to build that clientele and that's what I'm doing.
Supervisor Johnson, do you know how many riders there are out in Havasu and Sarah Park?
No, I don't, I don't know at this time Supervisor Angus, I haven't been involved in it a while. But I know when we started, I mean, the kids just come out of the woodwork to do that, you know? Being in all, a different age group.
I know that answer. There are somewhere between 40 and 50 riders, give or take a good night. That's like 13 to 15 motos.
They had four motos last week.
And they had four motos last week. We had three. Okay? And there's times when we had five. But you know, again, that attrition is everywhere. It is real.
So, you know, the issue...
Is it a dying sport?
I'm sorry.
Supervisor Johnson, I didn't understand your last question.
Oh, I was just, I was just asking, is it a dying sport?
No, it is not. But, like I said, the attrition is, is not good. And so, USA BMX are coming up with these programs to get kids more engaged. We have the Boys and Girls Club right next to the track. You know, that is a goldmine as far as I'm concerned. And some of the programs that USA BMX have implemented, like beginner programs, whereas I think a lot of it has a lot to do with riders being intimidated when they come out. So, you have these, these seasoned kids. I mean, I know kids since they were six years old that are now 10. So, you have a kid that's 10 and wants to get into it. He's intimidated. The bikes are pricey and the kids are very skilled. So, they now have what they call a beginners league, so they don't come in contact with a novice, intermediate, or expert rider. They have their own set of races and practices and these, this is one of the, one of the programs that I think USA BMX wants to implement at this track. I won't do it in Kingman because Kingman doesn't need it. I do do my own thing there when it comes to my, my program, but I'm going to implement it all here. I have three groups of people who want to come in with training options for kids and engaging the kids in the, in the community.
Have you reached out to the Boys and Girls Club?
I have.
And what kind of response?
It's a positive response. You just have to, you know, visit them more often. I think the, the big help that I've been getting is through the Kiwanis Club. I've done seminars for them and I've done presentations for them.
Right. But they'll help you with money, but you're sorry, the kids are at the Boys and Girls Club.
We weren't thinking about the money as they were, they, they, they have fund-raiser ideas that helps us raise money so that we can get that track up to snuff. And then, of course, as far as the programs, we move forward, you know, with USA BMX and what Custom Ops has to do. Custom Ops is an LLC and it is registered here in Arizona. We have a business license here.
So, I'm thinking that, and again, and as I said to you earlier, I see this more as a county, like Supervisor Johnson said, you know, maybe the contracts weren't written quite the way maybe we could. I mean, this is kind of a new thing. But I need maybe to see some benchmarks or just more follow-up. So, and I do appreciate Mr. Nesbit coming. He's, he's very passionate about it. But we made this decision and I think Mr. Henry is doing a good job living up to it given some of the things he walked into. And I think that because he has the contract, we are going to give him the help and the benefits that he, that he deserves. And if I could get, can I get some kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? Maybe some kind of follow-up or, you know, status once in a while? This is kind of an unusual thing here, especially in my district, to have like this, this land that we're leasing that we don't really have oversight of. But when people tell me about safety issues, you know, my ears are going to pick up and that's what concerns me the most.
Make sure that we stay on top of that and make sure that you're in the loop.
Right. And I will come by more. I promise.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to add Supervisor?
No, unless, unless Hal has something.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus, I will personally meet with Mr. Henry and visit the side to get and ensure that the issues have been brought up to the board here today that we are addressing them, to ensure. And I can do a follow-up report and submit it to the supervisors as well.
And would you speak to Mr. Nesbit as well?
Okay.
And make sure that his, his concerns are being addressed as well? Because I know he uses it, I know his family uses it, so he's got some skin in the game as well.
Sure, absolutely.
And I would certainly imagine the heat has something to do with some of the summer attendance down in Lake Havasu and Bullhead City, so that might be an indicator of why there's a little bit more activity in Kingman. A little more climate-friendly that part of the year, so recognize that. Mr. Nesbit, I'll recognize you again for another minute.
Chairman Watson, I just wanted to address Mr. Esplin, the county attorney. Everyone said they went down on the property and said, saw no safety issues. I sent this picture to Ms. Angus last night. I took it yesterday. If you can zoom in, you can see the glass is clearly broken and there are shards out of the frame. So, pretty much everyone that said there's no safety violations either didn't go down there or they're lying to the board this morning. And to me, that's a big issue because it's as clear, there's pictures that show all six windows are broken and that's not, there is shards of glass hanging off of that frame. And to me, the contract sets the county's not liable. I don't know if you can add to this? With you guys knowing there are safety issues, if someone gets hurt with that, would you guys be liable? Because to my opinion, that would be him putting the county at risk because he doesn't want to fix up the facility. And that's, to me, that's wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Nesbit.
I'm not going to answer any legal questions here, but I would just recommend, I think we follow the course that Supervisor Angus and Chairman Watson has asked, that we coordinate with the Parks Department with, with Mr. Henry and Mr. Nesbit to make sure that any issues are addressed and addressed as quickly as possible. I also wanted to clarify one thing. I didn't understand what Mr. Henry said. I'm just quickly reviewing the, the contract again. I don't think there's any stipulation or provision that prohibits him from having employees work there. He can have as many employees as he wants. There's a volunteer release provision. Any volunteers that he uses needs to sign a release, but otherwise, I don't see anything else that prohibits him from having his own employees to work there. Did you guys see anything otherwise? Do you know? I'm sorry, what?
Chairman Watson, Ryan Esplin, it's the work comp issue that's in the lease. I'm sure, I believe that's what Mr. Henry was speaking about and that's a statute requirement.
Well, I know, but he can have employees, but then he has to get workers' compensation.
Correct.
And we expect that.
Absolutely, yes.
That's required, but he can still have his own employees and he provides workers' compensation for them. He needs to do that.
Yes.
So, but just to suggest that he cannot have any employees there, that's not correct. I'm sorry, am I missing something?
I didn't interpret that's what he said. He said... I didn't interpret that's what he said, he said that, you know, I think he implied the expense of it at this point is too much.
Okay, okay.
Because of workman's comp.
Got it, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, do we need any action on this, or are we going to just have staff review this?
Should we have staff review, or, I mean, I don't really see a reason for it to come back.
Mr. Chairman, I think what would be, what the board was looking for is an update on progress. Now, I want to remind the board that when this originally went out, all we're doing is leasing a piece of property for a specific purpose, and to do that, it's not, we don't own the property, it's BLM property, obviously, Section 20, but when we endeavored to do this, we had both individuals propose on what they were gonna provide, and then the board selected the one individual to move forward with and to approve the lease, there weren't any performance requirements, but since this has been brought to our attention, I think it would benefit the board, whether it be formally or in writing, to have Public Works provide a status of improvements, at least for a time being, maybe quarterly, would that be something that we could do, and provide a status, I would suggest in writing, and if the board wanted to bring that back formally before all of you in a meeting, that would be fine, too, and you could let me know one way or the other, and we would make that happen, but we can certainly do it on a status report on a quarterly basis on improvements and include the use information.
And just for clarification, because this was brought up, too, so it's a piece of land, it's BLM, and so do we have any liability on it?
Well, our Attorney's Office and Risk Management reviewed the information, they set forth the insurance requirements, and obviously, it's not in Mojave County's benefit to let the property fall into disarray or to have hazards on it, and that should be, let's say, part of our charge in being responsible landowners, to make sure that that doesn't occur, so I'm not sure that one, you know, one incident of some broken windows constitutes condemning the entire property, but it's something that I'm sure Hal is gonna keep an eye on and watch out for and make recommendations and try to work with the leasie to make sure that the property doesn't fall into disarray, that's something that I would expect.
Okay, and I'll keep an eye on it.
Yes.
I'll look out my window and back.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Staff, Chair would entertain a motion then for staff to give a quarterly status review, is that-
Yes, appropriate.
Okay.
So, move.
We have a motion, and I presume that's the second? Supervisor Angus, yours was the second?
Mine was the second, and yours was the motion.
All right, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, motion carried unanimously. At this point, I'd like to apologize to Mr. Boone if he's in the audience. I have overlooked Mr. Boone, he requested to speak on item 51, there was no action on 51, but at the same token, I did not call on him to speak, so I do apologize to Mr. Boone if he's in the audience. All right. Onto item 53, discussion, possible action, approve the direct staff to combine the positions of Economic Development Director and Public Information Officer to be brought back before the board for final approval. Supervisor Hill DeAngus, District 3, Bullhead City, Mojave County, Arizona.
So, this is 53, so we, our Economic Development Director resigned, and so I thought that this would be a perfect opportunity to discuss the idea of combining the positions and reinstating an office of PIO, I would like to see it with a different name, and just for some history, years ago, when at least I was running for office, there was some issues with the PIO, I'm not talking about the way they did their job, it got to be a little political, and there were some accusations made, and so when we took office, that PIO, that specific PIO had resigned, and we just decided not to replace it, but being here now for several years, I realize just how important that position is, I think we all do. Just for the things that we were talking about earlier with social media, with our staff being tasked with writing press releases, and, you know, writing press releases is art, and, you know, we have people doing it, and they do a good job, but I think it could be overwhelming, we have some people doing it now that are gonna be resigning soon, and so I think it's a really good opportunity. Now, the economic development, and again, we'll probably disagree on some of them, I see this position as being kind of perfect for it, because a communications director, PIO, whatever you want to call it, would be the first point of contact with any company or individual who seeks to do business in Mojave County, and this person would be, you know, the point person, know exactly where to instruct people to go, where they can get the information, who they should talk to, so I think it's a natural fit. Is it gonna be an economic development person, like, with the same job description as the last one? No, I mean, they're not gonna be out actively recruiting, which I don't think happened last time either, frankly, but I do see these two positions melding together, I don't think we need two, I think we need one. And another thing is, you know, this information getting out to the public and our constituents and just the public, there's a lot of stuff always going on, and as Nathan was saying earlier, you know, you go to Twitter and you get all this stuff, and as supervisors, we have specific things that happen in our district, and I know that Supervisor Johnson puts out a newsletter for his district, and that's his prerogative, and he's free to do that, but I think sometimes in the past, because he mingles it with information from the county, you know, about roads or about things that are gonna be happening, and then his point of view as the supervisor, I think it's confusing to some people in the public, and I know that for a fact, because I've gotten calls about it, so I think this position could put out something for the public to make sure everything that they need to know is there, and then maybe each supervisor can customize it to their particular district, maybe have a page, I've seen it work, I've seen many other, I have a friend who's actually supervisor in Riverside County, he's got 2 million people, constituents in his district, and that's what they do, they, their PIO puts together a newsletter, gives out all the pertinent information, again, it goes through legal, so we know everything is being done the right way, and then on the front page, each district supervisor, you know, does their thing, and I would like to see that, too, I think that would be good for everybody, not just the supervisors, of course, it would help us a bit, and Supervisor Johnson can decide what he wants to do, but I think this is a time to do it, especially with the social media and all the stuff that happens in the news, so that's why I put it on.
Thank you Supervisor Angus, I have a question, in your proposal to combine Economic Development Director and the PIO, would that be directly under then Mr. Hendrick's prevail as we approved prior to, for the-
I think that that's-
Economic Development Director, is that in mind?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, that this particular position would be under, again, I think that's, was the, how we got, how the perception got into trouble last time, but again, you know, we're talking about the people, and I trust that our county administrator is professional and will make sure everything goes the way it's supposed to, and whomever we decide, if we decide for this position, would have a job description, a really, you know, definitive job description, instead of sort of, you know, having to interpret for themselves what they believe their position is, and I think we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Bishop?
I do have a comment, I agree with Supervisor Angus, I think we're way, way past the point of needing a PIO for Mojave County, but I'm not too sure that an economic development position would be a part-time position, but I would be willing to throw my support behind this, with the understanding that if economic development part of this position is overwhelmed, then we could look at hiring another full-time economic development person to work under this new position, so.
Thank you for your comment. Supervisor Wacamota?
I believe, oops. I believe it's very important to keep our constituents aware of what we're doing, because I think sometimes the message, the meaning of the message is lost in interpretation, and if we had one person that would be able to explain this in one voice to everyone, it would make it a lot easier, so I do believe we need the PIO, and combining it with the Economic Development Director makes sense, unless to the point where if we need to split them up, then we would look at doing that.
Thank you.
Chairman Watson, part of my thinking was also monetary, you know, because we have this budgeted item that we had for the economic development, and now it's free, so I think maybe in the short term, we can try it out and see if that works. Again, it wouldn't be a full, it wouldn't be the same kind of economic development-
Right.
-job as the last one, it would more be point of contact, and I would like to change, I would like to change the name to something like Communications Director, something a little bit more encompassing about everything, instead of just information, I don't know, but that's up to you guys, too.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson, comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't see the money benefit we're gonna be getting back. I look back since the board, 2013, when we started with, we did away with the PIO that was there, and we got around 300 press releases that have come out of the county administrative office, and nearly all of them are public service announcements, such as notice of mosquito, foggy and health department notices, fire restrictions, and aside from press releases on Planet Ranch and MBIDD, the county as a whole really hasn't had a need for a, or at least in my opinion, a PIO. I believe a PIO gives the general opinion of something that's going on at the county level, and they say, yeah, you know, this is coming up, and this is what the county's done, the chairman just put out a fire restriction today for everybody. I don't see that much work for somebody to do, I really didn't see it before when we had somebody, and I don't see it now, we haven't picked up anything, and I differ on the fact of a PIO handling like, we got a little confusion on my, like, Facebook policies and that sort of thing, I still think that the road department who puts out, "This road is closed," has to be able to do that immediately, if we have a PIO, you know, they could be on the lake, they could be steam, they could be wherever, but the road department's there to put out their information immediately, we have Byron Stewart, who should be handling all emergencies with fire and rescue responses, while the sheriff handles the rescue responses if firearms are involved, those sort of things, and when we get to the economic development, if we do something like this, I don't think the two meld very well, I think we're either in the game to win it, or we stay out of it, I think just having a guy around to say, "Hey, get ahold of Chris Ballard," isn't gonna do us much good. If we did a cost analysis to show exactly what we got for the money we spent on economic development over the last few years, got that information, and then maybe, and maybe I'm missing something that we're doing with press releases that aren't getting out, I just don't see the need for that, that's my opinion.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson.
Mike, how many press releases come out of your office between the ones that Linda Kelly writes, the one that Yvonne Orr writes?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a number Supervisor Angus, but with the exception of the special press releases from Public Works and the Health Department and so forth and so on, all the other press releases are generally drafted through Yvonne Orr and with my staff, so we in essence act, and probably not great doing a tremendous job promoting the county, but we in essence act as the county's Public Information Office, and all press releases, no matter who they come from, are reviewed by my office, they're first reviewed by Yvonne Orr, she looks at every one of them for content and accuracy, and then they're approved by myself and the chairman, and whoever the chairman is.
Right, and so that was, so one of my concerns was that, and we heard, again, how sort of overworked they are, I had, I really had no idea about that public information request, how much time goes into them, and that's just another thing, that's really not in their purview, again, it's a profession, PIO, PR Director, Communications, it's a specific profession where people are trained to speak to the press, to know what to say and things like that, and so right now, when you send out a press release, if someone in the media, who we have here, if he wants to find something out, he calls you, he calls the head of the department, taking away time, I just think that, you know, there's a reason that every large organization in the world has a communications director, and I think that we should be one of those organizations.
Chairman Watson, in line with Supervisor Angus's comments, I get emails and phone calls from reporters such as, from the Kingman Daily Miner and Lake Havasu paper, and your paper down there, wanting information, and I don't mind that at all, I get back with them usually the same day with comments, but if we had a PIO, there'd be contact in the PIO, and the information would be the same going to all of the news media releases, but I think also that a PIO could help alleviate some of the public information requests that we get, because our constituents would have a place to go to to get information, and I think PIO could also highlight a different department every so often, and help people understand county government and how it works, that's why I'm in support of trying to PIO again, I think we need it.
Very good, great comment. Okay, Chair would entertain-
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, just to add, just to add to that, even when, you know, I probably do the most press releases of the board members, and even when I do a press release, the reporters still want to talk to me, they don't take what I say as gospel, or they don't want to use that for a story, they want direct quotes, so it's not gonna stop them just because the PIO says we're doing something, they still want to hear Supervisor Bishop, what her opinion is, and what Supervisor Angus is and stuff, it doesn't alleviate them going right to the horse's mouth on those things, but that was all I had to say, thank you.
But wouldn't it be better to have-
Supervisor Johnson and I agree.
But wouldn't it be better to have an office, I mean, that's gonna go on, of course, that's just the nature of our position, but wouldn't it be better to have sort of a centralized office where if you can't reach us, and I know a lot of times I get calls when I'm not around, that we have our official statements, and I think it just, it makes for better government, I think it makes for better communication, because, you know, we've been working it, but I think, honestly, I think it's very amateurish.
Okay, all right, well, we'll entertain a motion.
Chairman Watson, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to come up with a job description for a communications director to be brought back before the board in, what do you think, 30 days?
Madam, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Angus, if we're moving forward with a communications director solely, the agenda item was to combine it, but if we're moving forward with a communications director solely, which is what your motion was, then we've got a fairly good job- Director solely, which is what your motion was, then we've got a fairly good job description for that particular position drafted up that wouldn't take much effort. We could probably bring it back in front of the board by next meeting, I would assume.
Well, you know, when I say the Communications Director, I am still putting in that economics development. That's why I'm changing from PIO to make it a little different, so we can incorporate some of those other responsibilities that economic development person would have. I don't really see-
I'm sorry. If the motion is as stated, to combine the two and have the staff bring it back, that could be done fairly, fairly quickly. However, with that said, give us till the meeting after next, because to get it on next meeting, we'd have to have it done by Thursday.
Right, okay. But also, and, you know, one of the reasons is, is because that's, I'm thinking that's how we're going to pay for it, through that position that's now open.
And just to clarify, let's say if the board does choose to combine the two, I would assume, like you, what you mentioned, it would be a director position and be at a Range 27.
That's what, that's what we had decided to do.
And so that director position would actually have to be confirmed and approved by the board. It would be, per my recommendation, we would do the interviews, and then the final selection would be the board.
That sounds good to me.
We have, I believe we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Johnson?
Would Supervisor Angus be willing to put in there, also have staff, might take a little longer, come back with what the benefits have been from having a Economic Development Director, or, you know, asking, say, the staff in the manager's office exactly what they've done as far as press releases? Because I looked at the numbers, and, I mean, there was just 300 since, whatever, I said, 2013 that came out. There isn't an abundance of work to be done.
Maybe, maybe- That's because we don't have a Communications Director.
Exactly.
Well, I'm pretty sure if there's something important going on, somebody calls us and asks for the information.
Well-
True.
Supervisor Johnson, I think the, my thought is if we had a Communications Director slash PIO, economic developer, whatever the term is that we come up with, it would provide opportunities for more communications with the public through various outlets, rather than just the few that are critical that we feel are necessary to get out there. We could add some interesting things about Mojave County and answer some of our constituents' concerns about how our local county government works.
And even, and I know they do this in other counties, could be a liaison with the state during session, keeping us surprised of things that are going on. We talked about that years ago, remember? So, yeah, I mean, I see a big, I see a position that's, that's pretty big.
Yes, actually, we had a legislative-
Remember? We were going to do that legislatively, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for item number 53.
We only have a motion at this time.
You've got a second now.
I just seconded it.
You just made the second? Okay, thank you. Due to the relative nature of this and all the discussion, we should probably have a roll call.
Supervisor Angus?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
Yes.
And Chairman Watson?
I'll give it a chance. Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, before I go into the items that I'm bringing forth to the agenda, I'm going to ask Supervisor Johnson if he wanted a motion for reconsideration on item number nine. That's fine.
I would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion for reconsideration of item number nine.
And I'll second your motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Supervisor Johnson, item number nine.
Okay, the reason I brought this up, we discussed it before, this is to do with, oh, I guess we've made a motion to reconsider, so we're okay. Valley Attorney?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Over the, overspending or misspending or not having the proper communication, going over donations made by the senior boards for the senior center, one of the things was, I believe, through one of the pest control places for beekeeping, we hired outside people. That's part of our contract we have with the one that we have. And also through water, through one of the local distributors, we're just paying too much. It's not a big item, but it's just the idea that maybe bring it to staff, I just wanted to bring it to staff's attention that even though it is donated money, it would be nice to, you know, at least get the best bang for our buck and not, you know, maybe there's something else we could do with the money, not overpay. That was all I had, Mr. Chair.
So you're bringing that to our attention?
I'd make a motion to-
Okay, and you're bringing a motion to-
Yes, that, that item, and then I'd make a motion to approve item nine. I just wanted to bring it out.
Okay, thank you. And I'll second your motion. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item 54, the discussion, possible action, approve the authorized delivery of the August 9, 2018 Notice of Claim Against Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District, also known as MBIDD, pursuant to the Arizona revised statutes 12-821-01, prepared for Mojave County by Riley Carlock and Applewhite. I'm bringing this item for your approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number 55, discussion, possible action, authorize the chairman of the board to execute a letter to Governor Doug Ducey regarding the county's support of the Walupi Nation's use of 4,000 acre feet of the Colorado River surface water for a pipeline from the Diamond Bar to the Grand Canyon West, and emphasizing that the use of groundwater in the Truxton Basin is not acceptable to Mojave County.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
Motion to adjourn?
Second to motion. Motion, meeting adjourned.